Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This meeting is being videotaped. There is one agenda adjustment tonight, 5B1, school committee staff recognition as the recipient is unable to attend the meeting tonight. So that will be on the agenda for July. Any public comment?
We'll leave in about five minutes available, ten minutes available.
Okay. Thanks Bob. So no public comments. Move on to the minutes. Get a motion for the minutes.
Aye.
Second by Hanover. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Treasurer's report, Jim?
Thank you, Chris. In your package is the monthly treasurer's report through the month of May. On the cover we have pictures from graduation. Eddie Carl made it to the front page. Whatever that thing around your neck is adjusted by one of the students, so very successful.
A hood.
A hood.
For the sake of the audience, yes.
I would call her the sash myself.
Page one, of course, has our financial statement balances and so-called cash balances. Through the end of May, balances were $6.4 million. That's a good number, strong number. It's about a million dollars more than last year. We will be spending a lot of money through the last couple of weeks. We have payroll for most, as all municipalities. Our teacher contracts are, they run from September through August. So we still owe the teachers a good chunk of money on this year's contract, which we paid off over the summer. There's a, the teachers have an option to get a lump sum check, which they got last week. And a handful of teachers do request a lump sum check, so they get a big check at the end of June. That reflects what is owed to them through the remainder of the contract. So in June, that, the cash balances will take a decline a little bit. So, but overall, I mean, we're in a strong financial position, so things are going well. The OPEV account, $665,000, again, that's in a pretty high interest rate account right now. So it generates about $10,000 worth of interest every year. Again, it keeps growing. We keep adding money into it, so it's, things are going well. Our revenue for the month, as you can see, we have the town assessments to do. We sent out the bills on May 1st. They were collected. $1.7 million was received during the month of May. The one, the town that hadn't paid was Hanover, but that was just a mailing issue. And that just, well, can't really call it mailing issues from the other part of town, but we received it.
They actually go to Brockton first.
Yeah, that's good. But the Hanover assessment was received shortly after the close of the books for May. So everybody's all paid up and so forth, so everything's good. And again, down below, we have the revenue from non-resident tuition, the chapter 70 that comes in like clockwork. One thing to update on the committee is our regional transportation. We get that in two lump sums. The first rev, the first piece we got was $259,000 back in January. And we get the second payment next week. It has been uploaded into the system. And that number will be about $261,000. So again, we're getting very strong regional transportation reimbursement through the state, which is good. In the final pages of the expenditures, the expenditures for the month, again, $971,000 was spent during the course of the month. Again, big ones, of course, as normal, salaries and wages, health insurance, and some minor adjustments. Overall, things are clicking for the end of the year. Got a couple of weeks left and we'll hopefully finish strong. So everything's going well. Again, I'd like to thank Tricia and Sylvia for all of their, you know, efforts in the business office with all the end of the year, as I discussed, the lump sums and the payrolls. It's a lot of work for Tricia on the payroll side, as we're integrating the online Tyler software stuff that we're doing through all the employees, and for Sylvia, all the end of the year requisitions and cleaning up all open purchase orders and tying all the numbers out. She's been doing a great job over the last few weeks since our last meeting as well. So overall, we're in great financial shape.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom. Jim?
I have one question, Jim.
Yep.
Don't the towns use electronic transfer devices?
No.
They still use paper?
Paper.
No sin.
No sin. Can I get a motion for the treasurer's report?
Motion.
Second by Rockland.
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Next, budget transfer?
We have one budget transfer in your package tonight for $6,000. It's a, we have some savings in our payroll account for the year. So we're asking to transfer $6,000 into our travel account from our salaries and wages, as was reported by Cody in the last meeting and by administrators. We do have a couple individuals who went to Ulo, Kentucky. They might be there right now, I don't know. I'm sure we'll have them soon.
Soon.
So that part of those travel things, we budget a little bit for the expectations that hopefully one person would go to the skills competition. And with the large number of individuals who went to this year's in-state competitions and moved forward to the state competitions, the travel budget was a little short from expectation, so we're just asking for transfer there.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Noel. Second by Rockland. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
The final item under my heading is the, a transfer into the stabilization account. As you're aware, as part of our long-range capital plan, we include in the budget a number for monies to go into the stabilization account every year for, you know, future expenses, feasibility studies, and potential renovation costs and so forth. We are allowed to put away 5% into stabilization each year from our budget. Going to request an amount of $144,000 to put into stabilization from this year's excess revenues, again, to max out to that 5% threshold for future endeavors and so forth. Tom and I have been working together the last four to six weeks, scrubbing down the numbers, as Tom likes to say, with the, you know, the revenues that are greater than expectation, our expenses. We've identified some savings to present to the committee, Tom will present to the committee a plan next month for, you know, the, any excess revenues that we might have to further, you know, make this building better with all the projects. So I think Mr. Moorhead's going to read a motion. Mr. Moorhead?
Mr. Hayward.
He's on here tonight. Mr. Hayward will read a motion.
Yes, I have a motion to transfer $144,928 into our stabilization, stabilization fund from excess revenues for the purpose of feasibility and/or renovation expenses.
Second.
Any discussion?
James, if we have money, can that be taken out for any particular renovation?
Yes.
So anything going forward? It doesn't have to be for the studies, nothing. So it could be for updated projects that just come and feel that we need to be done right away.
Okay. As the feasibility study was, as the facility plan was done last year, there was, as Tom had mentioned, there are a lot of projects that could be done with these funds.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Any more discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Anything else, Jim?
Yep, that's it.
Are you chairman? Oops, that's me. Not from the chairman. That's great. Secretary Treasurer Evaluation Committee, the committee met last week and has a recommendation for Jim's next contract. I get a motion for the treasurer, Secretary Treasurer contract?
I'll make the motion of the contract that we negotiated at the last meeting. Two and a half percent because no other changes.
Motion made by Noel?
With the exception of the extension of the contract.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
James, I haven't had a chance to read it, but I'll just abstain.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Okay, motion carries. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the committee, who were able to attend our graduation at the South Shore Music Circus. It was another, another great night, another great celebration, a lot of, a lot of very happy families. And I appreciate your continued support, your presence there, shaking every single hand of every single graduate. And we make maximum use of that stage in the center. So thank you again for all of your devotion to the school and the kids. Regarding--
The National Anthem tore the house down. That was the highlight of the forty graduations I've been to.
Just a quick backstory on that. We had a, we got a very small federal grant that we used to channel some dollars to service learning projects and to music and the arts. So part of that small grant, we paid a voice coach, who is a former graduate of ours, Rebecca Silva, to come back starting in the fall with a core group of kids. And one of my, that was, it was just a very simple request. If the kids stick with it, maybe they could sing the National Anthem at graduation. And those four kids were practicing, even though they had other obligations, drama and such, they stuck with it. And I thought it was an amazing, amazing job. And hopefully something that, with growing music and arts enrichment here, we could see more of in the future. So, yeah, thank you for that comment. Budget update, we have our town's support. We've secured our budget, as you know. We now look to, we now look up the street, we now look to see the, what's going on at Beacon Hill, where the budget deliberations are, at this time of year, are in a conference committee with members of the House and the Senate. Out of this conference committee will come a compromise budget, which then would go to the governor. So we'll be paying attention to where the numbers go. The projected numbers, I'm not anticipating major changes for us, but it's something we'll be, we'll be keeping an eye on. Optimistically, regional transportation, the debate between both branches of the legislature appears to be between 80 to 82%, which is one of the highest rates of reimbursement in a while. So I'll have more to say. Hopefully, they will be making progress and won't go too deep into July without a finished budget. And certainly, we'll update you in July. I'd also like to bring to your attention that we have a request for a book where the crowd adds sing the first, a first offer here from the English department. And I will, I'll also have this available for your review, if you wish, at the July meeting. And Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would point out that, just one minor point, that in your manila folder, you'll find some revised policies. If you're maintaining a paper copy of your policy manual, it's not an agenda item for discussion, but just if you are, if you're maintaining that in the manila folder, you'll find some that you can update in your policy manual there. Purple, three-hole punched. And there's a, there's an alpha system of organizing policies. These were policies voted at our most recent meeting. And Mr. Chairman, I'll now turn it over to our administrator reports. Sandy Waldner will offer some end-of-the-year wrap-up remarks.
Hi, everyone. How are you?
Good, Jane.
Good. It's nice to see you all. I have, first, I want to begin by personally thanking all of you for your volunteerism and supporting our school. So as we end another year, it's a nice opportunity to say thank you for all the time you spend at your general meetings, your subcommittee meetings, on our campus, and at our many, many events. So thank you very much for your time and efforts with us. Beyond watching the joy of our, for me, beyond the joy of watching our students successfully end another school year through the support of their teachers, a personal reflection is the success of our brand-new vocational coordinators and the work that is coming out of their office, supported by their administrative assistant, Nicole Connor. Really strong team with Bob Foley, Keith Boyle, and Nicole, supporting program management, doing a lot of restructuring, supporting teachers and students in a positive way. And they really need to be commended for their personal commitment to attending school events and for their amazing work with growing our social media. So a combination of some, that's a personal highlight for me this year. My purpose for being up here tonight is to talk to you a little bit about the summer opportunities we have for students on campus. You will see students around for extended learning opportunities, for those who require it in the months of July and August. We have a robotics camp for those who desire it, and that's for rising fifth, sixth, and fifth, rising fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, middle schoolers, from any, anyone who can get here, really. If you have transportation, you are welcome here from eight to 12 on July 8th through 12th. There are few spots available, and you can find that information on our website for middle schoolers. We have online summer classes to extend learning. We have at least one student taking a Spanish II class online to extend their learning opportunities and enrich their resume. So that opportunity is available, supported by a teacher, both virtually and on campus. Finally, you will see many, many students on campus working, putting their skills to work this summer. You'll see students here supporting the summer camp, construction, maintenance, our IT department, and doing some virtual work digitally, doing some publication work for us through the GVC program. So we are very thoughtful, thankful for their work. My focus this summer, among the many other administrative duties that keep the school going year-round, is to work with Ulo. They are interested in seeking South Shore Tech as their location for an engineering program, so that students can take a pre-engineering college-bound pathway here at South Shore. So you may be seeing a letter come across your desk sometime soon, encouraging you and school committee members from your town, administrative leaders from your town, to come and learn a little bit about that, so we can encourage students from other towns to join us here on campus, so that Ulo will come here and will be the South Shore site for that program for Ulo. So that's what's brewing.
Good.
Any questions?
Yes, I do have one.
Sure.
Underclassmen, summer school, whatever they call it, has that been made, other than the website, made notice to the, at least our district towns?
The extended learning is for our students who need support during the summer, and it's required for those students as part of their education plan. So those students are all aware that they have access to it. It's not an open enrollment program, it's for specified students.
To here, but to us, to all sending towns?
It is available, like the robotics camp, to anyone who can physically get--
So during the summertime?
No, after school during the school year.
Okay, that's my question. I wondered when that would take place, after school?
After school, outside of school hours, accredited college courses that get kids Ulo credits and a pre-engineering pathway.
Okay.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be back for 7:00 A.M. in a moment.
Unfinished business? We have no unfinished business. Under new business, school improvement plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'd ask Mr. Aubrey to come up. Mr. Aubrey and the school council worked on document five, the school improvement plan. This is a, this is an annual item that is brought to the committee. Mr. Aubrey?
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. First of all, Sandy was very good, excuse me, about acknowledging the efforts of Mr. Boyle and Mr. Foley. I'd be amiss if I did not mention the strong work that Sandy has done this year in curriculum and taking on discipline in this building. She's done a fabulous job, and she needs equal kudos on what she's done here. You have document five, which is the school improvement plan that is made up of a committee of parents, students. Cody Campbell, our previous student rep, was on that committee, as well as teachers. Mr. Filano was one of the teachers that was on this group. I want to hit some of the highlights, and then I'll take any questions you might have. One of the highlights for me is that we are instituting lanyards for all students next year. So when you come into the building, and I will get you your own lanyard, gentlemen, don't worry. These are breakaway lanyards, so that they get, can be pulled off, nothing that can be choking hazard. But this is just another safety hazard or another safety reason for us to be able to identify our students easily. And early on in the year, that's helpful with the influx of 200 new students every year. It will help us. So that's one of the things you're going to find in there. There's also in here a movement, and this is something I'm championing myself, is to put in a community service requirement for graduation. You find this in almost every other school district around. We will be instituting that as well. We're looking, in my model, it would be 10 hours per year that students would require, so a total of 40 hours, which is pretty typical for most high schools. And we would grandfather that in, so the 10th grade, the 12th graders would only have to do 10 hours, the 11th graders would do 20, and so and so. There's plenty of opportunities on campus with all the great events we do, with student council and other things that, there's plenty of chances here and then in their own sending communities to get those 10 hours a year in order to make it a graduation requirement. Keeping with the service community learning, we've talked about the last couple of years, Mr. Filano taking students to New Jersey and then to Houston, Texas this year. Those things are expensive, shockingly, and so we are looking at trying to develop a relationship with some of the unions and maybe a corporate sponsor or two to help offset the cost for those things. So you'll find that as part of this school improvement plan, to underwrite some of those costs. The kids this year paid upwards of $200 to go on this trip. It was more than that, but somewhere in that range, to go and work for a week. So it would be nice if we could help to defer some of those costs and maybe be able to take even more students in a future venture. So that is another nice thing. And the final thing in here that I want to mention is the alumni association. We did finish up last night, I'm happy to say, the bylaws with that group. We have, last night, we had 13 people, who have been pretty standard, coming to these meetings. Last night was the seventh meeting this spring. So they have been working on putting together bylaws. We'll be working with a lawyer to get those things put into place with the Secretary of State's office, along with ones for the Viking Athletic Association and the Parents Association. So all those things will be coming along. The Alumni Association is very excited. We talked about homecoming, what that's going to look like. We've talked about their participation in graduation perhaps next year. So there's a lot of things. There's a lot of good gel of students from about 15 to 10 years ago. And then we have some that just graduated last year that are really interested in helping out. So that was a good thing as well. I'll take any questions you might have. Thank you, gentlemen.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Aubrey. All right. I get a motion to approve the 2019-2020 school improvement plan? Motion made by Noel. Any discussion or any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next, do you want to give any--
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under, under 7B, you folk, you folks have been very kind in waiving facility fees for the last two years for the Learn to Cope organization. This is a nonprofit organization that supports people who have family members dealing with addiction issues. They use the restaurant for weekly meetings, and I would ask that we continue that relationship by waiving the fees for the upcoming year.
Has a motion to approve the meeting space for Learn to Cope? Motion made by Rockland, second by Abington. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Surplus?
I'll make the motion that we declare those items listed surplus.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, warrants for approval. Warrants number 1923. Warrant number 23, 23A, 23B, 24, 24A, and 24B, for a total of $902,850.76.
Bob, you had--
That's okay. Second.
All in favor? Any discussion?
Aye.
Bob? You have any discussion on that?
No, not discussion on that, no. There was something under the business I wanted to bring up for the next meeting, that's all. And that's, I've been in discussion with Dr. Hickey about, I've been getting some calls from my town asking about transportation issues, and I talked to Dr. Hickey about it. I just wanted to see if we could finally get something on the agenda, so it's above the, above us. Being able to provide some transportation to them at school for sporting events or other times during the summer that maybe some of our drivers would be able to help out at a lesser cost than what they're paying for for a student or something else that was reached out to them to ask me what the possibilities of helping us do that. But the one question I have before we do that is that our lease, does our lease go by miles?
No.
Like a normal, so that doesn't matter, is that--
Not at all.
But, Mr. Chairman, if I could respond, Bob, thank you for bringing that up. So I'm excited by the potential for this, and I would, I would also say that this is something that, as part of truly being part of a regional community, we have the capacity, with very little red tape, to do this. So let me be specific. This summer, I am contracting with the Rockland Youth Commission to be the provider of field trips for younger kids that the commission has. We can, there is no obstruction other than the kids would, the chaperones would sign a waiver. And we would pass, we would simply pass along the cost of fuel and labor to residents of our, of this community. And if there were situations in the future to support our resident towns, especially in the area of expensive one-off extracurricular activities, there may be some potential there. And so I look forward to exploring that as well. So this will be the first time that we've piloted this, and I'm optimistic this is going to work very well.
I have a question on it. With providing transportation for those special groups like Bob mentioned, would we be acting like a common carrier, such as that, so we would have an added insurance cost?
That's right, Bob. So in check, in, well, in checking with the insurance agent that we have, there's, there would be no additional costs there. We would require an insurance documentation from, from the entity that's going to be using the buses. But no, I'm happy to say there's no, we're not incurring any additional costs there.
Because under the common carrier, they'd have to have $5 million minimum to--
I can double-check with Charlie, but in, in working through some of the logistics, he didn't see a concern, other than just having some extra waiver on file. But other than that, this would be, on a very, very small scale, if I could just remind you that, back in March, we had eighth graders from Abington come here when Abington had a half-day. So it was not an Abington-sponsored tour of the school. And so in essence, what we did was we supplied transportation to bring these kids here. We had those students' families sign, sign a similar, a similar release. But, yeah, I'll check into that, Bob, but I think we're going to be okay.
Back to the warrant. I don't know if we took a vote on that. We, I, did we take a vote?
Yep.
I'll sit with that. Okay, good. Thank you, guys. Request for action? Any more requests for action? That's good. All right, motion to adjourn. Go ahead, Tom.
I wondered if Tom could address the, our need to hire some additional instructors for next year. We talked about it briefly the other day. HBAC plumbing--
Yes, thanks, Tom. So we, as we go into the summer, we have, we have a vacancy in our HVAC program where we are looking for a plumbing instructor. We have interviewed, we have a vacancy for our carpentry program. The interview committee has interviewed two candidates. I've been forwarded one candidate, and I expect I'll interview a second candidate there. Our automotive program has a long-term sub-opening. Our anticipation is that this person would be in a temporary substitute capacity through half of the 1920s school year. And should the position become permanent-- And should the position become permanent, it would be reposted. So, I interviewed the candidate that the interview committee looked at just earlier today, as a matter of fact. So, if, if I were to project out, I would feel reasonably confident that we would have two of those three positions filled, temporary automotive position, a carpentry position. But we are, I don't believe I have any active candidates right now for the plumbing position, although the interview committee did conduct a couple of interviews. But, you know, we, yes, we had an opportunity to talk about that. And it's, it's important that we don't always use traditional, we shouldn't always rely on traditional means for teacher recruitment, because oftentimes, we are looking for people who are excited about education coming directly from, from industry, and will continue to do that.
Yeah. To that end, I have a person that used, we've used in a friendly way in the auto body industry and did speak with him and actually gave him your business card.
Excellent.
And he's considering it. It's just a matter of him running a business and possibly having someone to take care of the business while he's spending time here.
That is, for many trades, that is a very, that's a very common challenge, because you, it's tough to keep a proper foot in both, in both worlds as you're transitioning to education. Thanks for bringing that up, though.
Thanks, Tom. A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Rockland, second by Abington. All in favor? Opposed? All right. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.